November twenty-ninth, as it was supposed to. South River.
Mr. Andre?
Here.
Mr. Bazak?
Here.
Mrs. Beck? Mrs. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mr. Rosano?
Here.
Mrs. Urbanic? Mr. Ialuda? Mrs. Cassiano?
The board members have copies of minutes of May twenty-fourth, June twenty-eighth, July twenty-sixth, October fifteenth, and October eighteenth. Any additions? Any issues? Motion to accept?
Move the minutes in accordance with board policy?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cruz. Second, and Mrs. Rosanna, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. So, Carrie.
There are several items on the agenda for tonight. South River Foundation for Educational Excellence, the first LEGO League English Department, South River Robotics, South River Parks Recreation, South River Future Stars, South River Middle School PTA, the Class of Two Thousand and Twenty, the Girl Scouts of Central Southern New Jersey, and the High School Student Council.
Good point, my pleasure.
Move the use of facilities in accordance with board policies.
Motion by Mrs. Nielsen?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Cruz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I am. I have to abstain from eleven ninety-one.
Some other. All in favor?
Yes.
Oh. So, Carrie. Any other important?
Being resolved at the Board of Education hereby certifies that it is the receipt of the financial report which indicates that no major account has been over expended and that sufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year. The Finance Committee recommends that the reports of the Board Secretary and the treasurer of school monies for September two thousand eighteen be approved in ISO mode.
Motion by Mrs. Cruz.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Nielsen. All in? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so, Carrie. Superintendents, your point? Mrs. Urge?
Thank you, Mr. Ialuda. We've had quite a busy November. One of the things that took place in our district this month was a charter school focus group session. This session was an invitation from the New Jersey Department of Education to District to hold a community focus group on the topic of charter schools and the process for their implementation in New Jersey. So, we put in an application to host the event, and we were accepted. And NJ DOE was here with some of our community members, some of our teachers, administrators, community members. Ms. Cassiano was there, and some of our students. And the goal for that session was to be able to talk about how charter schools are implemented in New Jersey and provide some feedback to the New Jersey Department of Ed in terms of the financial impact that charter schools have in our district, as well as the communication between charters and their home school districts. And we had some really good conversation. SRA was also present at this meeting, and they provided the refreshments. We're thankful to them for that. And we were able to really provide some very detailed feedback to the NJ DOE representatives, who will bring that feedback back to the Commissioner of Education, who then in turn makes recommendations for changes to the State Board of Ed. So, it was good to have a voice in the conversation. And one of the things that we were told by the NJ DOE representatives is that our feedback was very similar to some of what they've been hearing across the state. So, it gave us a good feeling that maybe some changes will be happening in terms of how charter schools are implemented and funded in the state. We also have preschool registration coming up. So, as we've been discussing, our grant application for preschool expansion was approved. We're moving forward. We have everything coming in for those preschool classrooms over the winter break. Everything will be assembled and ready to go for when we get back from break. The staff is listed on our agenda, hired and listed on this agenda that you'll approve tonight. The playground design has already also been established, and that will be ready to be built and ready for kids in the spring. But Registration Week is the week of the twenty-sixth. Registration is taking place that entire week. Registration is for four-year-olds who are not currently in the program and are South River residents. And the preschool, again, will be full-day preschool and will be tuition-free for our community members. So, we're really excited about that. One of the things that I've been trying to make clear to the community is that we only have so many spots based on the capacity this year. We will be expanding capacity for next year. But between January and June, we only have so many spots. So, registration doesn't necessarily guarantee participation. But we're really just at least making sure everybody registers so that we know what the interest is in the community and can therefore plan accordingly for next year, too. So, please let anybody who you know falls under that criteria to please register. Some updates on our instructional programs. We have definitely noticed, based on feedback from our teachers and some of the walkthroughs that I've conducted, as well as some of our administrators, that we are desperately in need of a new language arts program, especially in K five. Our current program is significantly outdated, and it just doesn't meet the current standards. So, we had our teacher leaders come in one day last week. They have a second session coming at the end of November. Our teacher leaders were together with our Director of Curriculum, Dr. Joe Trevisano, and they spent the day listening to presentations from different literacy program vendors just to see what options exist. And they had a really good meeting. They were able to provide feedback after each presentation and are narrowing down the programs to two that we will pilot and try for the remainder of the school year, collect more feedback on before we make a final decision on what we will adopt. Adopting a new series is expensive, and it's about a five-to-seven-year commitment. So, we definitely want to make sure that we're making the right choice. And we definitely want to make sure that our teachers are giving us the input, since they're the ones that teach it every day. So, we've started that and excited to have that coming along.
We also... Which two have they narrowed down to to pilot?
They haven't yet, because they have a second day of presenters to see. So, so far, they've seen three presentations, and they have three more scheduled. So, they'll be choosing two out of six, which is a good selection. We have a district collaborative leadership team. This team is made up of teachers, association representation, district administrators, board members. Some of you sit on this district leadership team. And the goal of the team is to basically examine what areas might be in the district for improvement and growth and really brainstorm and come up with collaborative solutions for those areas. And that team met for the first time last week, and we were able to really sort of list some priorities that we think the team should address. And we will be meeting again shortly. We're starting by selecting one of those items and really focusing on that. And again, just having input from all stakeholders to problem solve through some of the things that we feel could improve. And weather and district information. I just want to remind everybody to make sure they are receiving our weekly E-RAM. It has a ton of information. Every Friday, it goes out. But in addition to that, you'll get messages when we have a weather-related cancellation. The storm we had last week was certainly unexpected. We were fortunate to be able to write out the whole school day, but even that was a challenge. Certainly, we got the heaviest snow at the worst time possible. But definitely make sure that you are receiving our messages, our E-RAMs, and also always check our district website and our Facebook page. That's the best place to get the latest information also. And so concludes my report.
Were members of motion to accept this?
Move the superintendent's report?
Mr. Nielsen, second, but...
Mr. Bazak?
Mr. Bazak? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so, Carrie.
Yes, we also have one. Item number two is approved confirmed HIP number one. That's also in your agenda.
No, me either, so. The Athletic Committee, Mr. Andre?
Yes, I have nothing on the agenda, but I do want to point out a couple of things on behalf of Mrs. Beck. She apologized that she couldn't be here tonight. She may have surgery done. Just a couple of things. The South River Boys Soccer Team was awarded the GMC Blue Division Sportmanship Award. Congratulations to the Girl Soccer Mean To, who was named the Gold Division with the GMC Coach of the Year Award. And also, the Animal Lions Club Dinner will be held on Tuesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the DFW South River. And also, congratulations to the senior girls tennis player, Elena Grimmich, and the senior football player, Michael De Santos, who was selected as South River High School December Athletes of the Month.
You all have anything? Nothing on the building grounds, Mr. Nielsen?
Nothing on the building grounds, sir.
None in the planning screen?
We have twelve items this evening. One, approved contract J.A. Biztown Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Two, approved contract Educational Travel Tours, Inc., Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Three, approved contract Bus Rental dot com Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Four, approved contract Dave and Buster's Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Five, approved contract Madame Desousles Field Trip Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Six, approved contract Music Theater International Musical Licensing Service Provider for Middle School, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Seven, approved tax requisition. Eight, approved line item transfers. Nine, approved requisition list. Ten, approved contract Acelero Learning Head Start Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Eleven, approved applies to make grant applications. And twelve, approved contract Tools of the Mind Professional Development Service Provider, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year. Any questions?
What? Instruction committee, Mr. Rosanna?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items tonight. One, approved professional development travel expenses, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Number two, approved field trips, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Number three, approved out-of-district placement and home instruction, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Number four, approved curricula guides. And those guides for the edification of the public are all high school, language arts and composition, human anatomy and physiology honors, and environmental science honors. Number five, approved invitation to participate in Rutgers University Research Project, The Rule of Urban Extension in Promoting the Interest, Identity, and Career Development of Youth from Under-Served Communities, a Longitudinal Study. Now, we all have this in our packet, okay? My first question is... Well, first of all, it's no cost to the district. Is that correct? If we choose to do this?
That's right.
Okay, good. What is an underserved community or an underserved school?
That depends on the definition outlined by the grant. Most of the time, that's based on the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Okay, thank you. Now, it says that the students who participate in this will be going to Rutgers Campus for a week fifty-hour service, but it doesn't say when that would be. Would that be in the summer during the school year?
Yeah. So, just to clarify, what we're doing here, this letter, is to agree, it's what's called a soft agreement.
Right.
So, what this means is that Rutgers, the university, is applying for a very significant grant. It's a multimillion-dollar grant. They've applied for the grant before and have not earned the grant, actually. We were informed of that. Now, if Rutgers is approved for the grant, then what they would do is they would outline all of those elements in terms of when those visits would take place. They would outline all of that information and exactly what the program would look like. And then we, as a district, would make a determination as to whether we would participate or not. So, we're not actually agreeing to participate. What we're agreeing to is to say that we have an interest in the event that they get the grant to find out more information and then make a decision as to whether we would participate. So, if that happened, if Rutgers got the funding, then they would invite us to participate, and then I would put that in front of the board again.
Okay, so, most of my questions would be answered then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Urge. I appreciate that. And that's all I have.
Any more? Just foreign negotiations?
Yeah, a couple of things on the negotiations. We'll be having a negotiations committee meeting either before or after your regular meeting on December seventeenth to go through board proposals and sort those out so that we can get those exchanged with the SRAA in December to get negotiations meetings started in January. We have exchanged or produced scattergrams for the union. They are reviewing those. So, the legwork is being... is well underway at this point. We also have, under your agenda tonight, you have a sidebar agreement with the SRAA regarding two stipend positions for the expanded preschool program that you spoke about in executive session in October.
Thank you. New policy, Mr. Urge?
Just one item this evening, and that's to adopt the second reading of new policy, fourteen ten point one, Animals on School Property.
And... You have any...
Eighteen items tonight, sir. One, approved resignation, Kristen Scully, school psychologist. Two, approved resignation, Anne Marie Carrick, teacher leader, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Three, approved appoint Alexander Reyes, primary elementary school music teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Four, approved appoint Jennifer Dockerty, preschool master teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Five, approved appoint High School Lunch and Learn Math Intervention Program Staff, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Six, approved salaries, non-bargaining unit, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Seven, approved additional coach, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Eight, approved new job description, number B dash four dash B, master preschool teacher. Nine, approved appoint Karina Mastrosario, preschool teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Ten, approved appoint Maria Stempora, preschool teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Eleven, approved appoint Candice Siradazik, primary school teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Twelve, approved appoint Dowell Pierce, teacher leader, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Thirteen, approved appoint Christopher La Traveras, Fieldsman, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Fourteen, approved disability, sick, family leave, Anne Marie Carrick, middle school science teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Fifteen, approved intermittent family leave, Donna Connor, elementary school teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Sixteen, approved new job description, number C dash fourteen, Coordinator of Preschool Expansion Program. Seventeen, approved new job description, number C dash fifteen, Coordinator of Preschool Expansion Grant Application. Eighteen, approved appoint Jamie Weiss, middle school science leave replacement teacher, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. And that's it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Urge. You still have more?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have two on the agenda for tonight. Number one, approved school safety manual for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. And number two, approved route number T V A to South River Public Schools to East Brunswick, New Jersey, for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. And that's all.
Anyone else? At this time, I'd like to announce that the reorganization of the school board for coming here will be held at January first at six p.m. Anyone have any...
In this room, Mr. Andre?
Hard?
In this room.
In this room? Yes. Anyone have any comments? No?
So, I'm just confirming, is that six p.m. or seven p.m.?
Six p.m. At this time, we will open the meeting to the public for any comments or questions on items strictly listed on the agenda. There will be another portion, and any item can be addressed. Strictly for items on the agenda. Anyone coming to the podium, give their name and address, and they are limited to comments of ten minutes. Anyone from the audience? Second call? Last call? As a public portion of the meeting? Any community affairs? Mr. Nielsen? Or consent, I'm sorry. Consent resolution?
The South River Board of Education, by means of a consent resolution, adopt various resolutions that have received a non-controversial nature at one time, whereas the low-listed resolutions are hereby adopted by said Board of Education in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon under the superintendent's... Superintendent of Schools, item one. Finance, items one through twelve. Instruction, items one through five. Negotiations, item one. Policy and legislation, item one. Human resources, items one through eighteen. And safety and risk, items one and two.
Motion, please.
Move the consent resolution.
Second.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Bazak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Rosanna?
Yes.
Mr. Ialuda?
Yes. Yes, so, Carrie. Now, the school community relations, Mr. Bazak?
Yes, I have twelve items on the agenda. Number one, South River Foundation for Educational Excellence fundraisers. The South River Foundation for Educational Excellence would like to express their heartfelt thanks to Superintendent Urge, the Board of Education, staff members in the communities for your support of the Harlem Wizards fundraiser. Special thanks to our South River All-Star Team players and event volunteers. Everyone's help and support was greatly appreciated. Then we have the saved date for their next fundraiser is the annual Adult Dinner Dance to be held on Friday, February first, at the Ria Mar, seven p.m. Tickets are sixty dollars in advance, seventy dollars at the door. It's a guaranteed great time. The monies raised from the fundraisers are used to fund the SRFE's grants for teachers to use as supplemental funding for their students and for the South River High School Scholarship Awards for graduating seniors. Please feel free to contact them at info@srfe.org if you have any questions about the organization or their upcoming fundraisers. Number two, middle school, October Student of the Month, sixth grade. The sixth grade team unanimously supports the selection of Zuleka De Silva as October Student of the Month. Zuleka exhibits character traits such as reliability, dependability, approachability, leadership, and friendliness that uniquely position her as a good role model for her peers. In fact, when students were asked to reflect on similarities that the girls in their classes shared with the Spatika astronaut Ellen Ocha, Zuleka's name was specifically referenced. Zuleka feels great that students look to her in this capacity. She excels in all of her academic classes, as evidenced in her strong performance in elementary school, as well as to date in the middle school. She's a member of the middle school cross-country team, and in her free time enjoys playing soccer, watching television, hanging out with friends. Congratulations, Zuleka. Number three, October Student of the Month for the seventh grade. South River Middle School's seventh grade student of the month is Kaylee Conrad. Kaylee's favorite subject is language arts because she likes to read. To get good grades, Kaylee studies for tests and pays attention in class. In her free time, Kaylee enjoys cheering, reading, and hanging out with her friends, family, and pets. She is also involved in a student council, the yearbook committee, chorus, and drama. In the future, Kaylee plans to go to college and become an anthropologist. Congratulations, Kaylee. Fourth, number four, middle school, October Student of the Month, eighth grade. The student of the month for eighth grade is Barbara Olivera. Barbara gets her good grades by always doing her homework, paying attention to class, taking notes, and studying with her test quizzes. Her love of history has made social studies her favorite subject. In her free time, Barbara enjoys playing sing and listening to music. She's in the school chorus and percussion. Barbara's part of the school's drama club, student council, and yearbook committee. In the future, Barbara can see herself having a career in theater, singing, or in music. Congratulations, Barbara. And number five, middle school. South River Middle School students, faculty, and staff conducted a Thanksgiving Day food drive for the needy area residents. The collection of food took place in the social studies classes. A basket was placed in each of the social studies classrooms, and a tally sheet for each class was kept. Student council members collected, donated items at the end of each day. The food drive was conducted from November first until November sixteen. The one social studies class with the most items donated will receive a special treat. Thank you to everyone who helped make the Thanksgiving fundraiser food drive a success. Number six, South River High School Student of the Month, September two thousand and eighteen. The South River High School is proud to honor one female and one male senior student each month as a South River High School Student of the Month. Students are chosen based upon their exemplary status as a model student through community service, academic record, modeling the strive for five core ethical values of respect, responsibility, honesty, kindness, and service, and maintaining exemplary behavioral and attendance record. A biography of the September two thousand and eighteen Student of the Month is as follows. Samantha Brown is the September Student of the Month due to her outstanding service in our school and community. Samantha has a strong commitment to service and evidenced by her broad range of service activities within the South River community. She works with special needs children over the summer, works with senior citizens throughout the year as a volunteer at Willitt Manor, and is an active member in clubs such as the Interact Club and Girl Scouts. Her outstanding achievements don't stop there. Samantha also exemplifies what it means to be a leader as president of Class of Two Thousand and Nineteen and of the student council, as well as treasurer of Future Business Leaders of America at South River High School. And she has served on the Board of Education Super representative for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen academic school year. She has represented South River at the National Young Scholarship Program at Princeton University, the Junior National Young Leaders Conference, and the National Student Leadership Conference and is a member of the National Honor Society. Alex Letoche is the September Student of the Month due to his combined commitment to academic service and leadership. He is currently ranked third in the Class of Two Thousand and Nineteen and has excelled on his AP exams. In the community, Alex volunteers at both St. Peter's University Hospital and the Second Chance Pantry. His leadership stands out among his peers and includes the following roles: president of the Future Healthcare Professionals Club for three years, vice president of student council during the junior year, and co-president in his senior year; Secretary of the South River Foundation for Educational Excellence for two years, as well as a member of both the RWJ Safety Ambassador Program and the National Honor Society. While keeping busy with his service and leadership, he has earned several awards including the Cross Country Coaches Award, Division Champs for Cross Country, and Scholar Athlete. Congratulations to Samantha and Alex. Number seven, the South River High School Student of the Month for October 2018. Paige Edwards is the October Student of the Month. Her list of service activities within the community is very impressive and includes volunteering at South River Parks and Recreation Department, as well as being a member of the Teen Advisory Board for the South River Public Library, the Safe Streets Task Force, and the Earth Club. Additionally, Paige is a leader in her school community, holding positions as captain of the varsity tennis team, secretary of student council, and secretary of the Future Business Leaders of America South River chapter. Paige has also earned her Bronze Award for Girl Scouts, is a member of the National Honor Society, and is a Scholar Athlete. She accomplishes all of this while working at a part-time job and maintaining a wonderful GPA, earning her the distinction of being currently ranked fifth in the class of 2019. Luke Sukowski is also October Student of the Month. Luke has a permanent smile on his face and is often seen around school complimenting fellow classmates and promoting school spirit. He is Vice President of Student Council, along with being Class of 2019 class officer, National Honor Society member, Interact Club member, and freshman orientation guide. Luke is also active in the South River community, volunteering his time at the South River Public Library as a summer work tutor, helping out at the Second Chance Food Pantry, and working with students in extended school year programs. Number eight, high school Heisman School Winner. South River High School is pleased to announce that senior Paige Edwards was announced as Wendy's 2018 High School School Heisman School Winner. For a total applicant pool of nearly forty-two thousand high school scholar athletes graduating with the class of 2019, she was one of seventy-five hundred recognized as a school winner in the Wendy's Annual Scholarship Competition. The program launched by Wendy's founder, Dave Thomas, seeks to celebrate the outstanding achievement of the youth in America who share Wendy's values of giving back to their communities, treating people with respect, continuing education, and excelling on the athletic field. Paige will continue to compete for the chance to become state finalists, which go on to be at the national level. Congratulations, Paige, and good luck. Number nine, high school Lunch and Learn. Any student who need help with math are invited to attend the Lunch and Learn program. The program meets two days each week during all three lunch periods. The schedule is posted on hallways, in the hallway, and on the main office door opposite the cafeteria in each of the math classrooms. Number ten, primary school Veterans Day speakers. Staff Sergeant Adam Malgieri and Technical Sergeant Kristen Lucano from the U.S. Air Force came to speak to students about Veterans Day. Both members of the Air Force are located at the one-hundred-eighth air refueling wing at Joint Base McGuire-Dix-Lakers. During the presentation, they showed students pictures of the airplanes and jets that they work on at the base and explained how they fly. They showed students a map of all the locations that they had been stationed and discussed the five different military branches and the job of each branch. At the end of the assembly, students were taught in practice how to properly salute like a member of the military. Thank you, Staff Sergeant Malgieri and Technical Sergeant Lucano. Number eleven, high school Adopt a Family program. The South River High School Adopt a Family Program club is requesting donations to help create a positive memorable holiday by supplying gifts, clothing, and necessities to families in need in South River. In the past, this program has been fortunate enough to assist over one hundred children in our community as a result of the generous donations received. We are currently asking for toys, clothing, new items only, please, food or monetary gift to assist in purchasing items. If you'd like to donate a monetary gift, please make the check payable to the South River High School Adopt a Family. For your convenience, a drop box bin is located in the South River Public Library in Appleby Avenue. Thank you on behalf of the Adopt a Family program for your generosity and support. Any questions may be directed to Debbie Zeeman at seven-three-two-six-one-three-four-thousand, extension six. And last, number twelve, high school breakfast with Santa. The South River High School National Honor Society is hosting a breakfast with Santa once again this year to benefit the Adopt a Family program. The breakfast is being held on Saturday, December eighth, 2018, from ten to eleven-thirty A.M. in the South River Middle School cafeteria. Tickets are three dollars, children up to age of ten are welcome. Come join in the fun, breakfast, crafts, games, music, and visit with Santa. Children must be accompanied by an adult. Tickets are available at the door of the day event, however, space is limited, so it is advisable to purchase tickets in advance. Tickets may be purchased at Grade Three Winter Concert on December third, six-thirty P.M., South River Middle School cafeteria, and at the High School Winter Concert on December fifth, seven P.M., being held at the South River High School Auditorium or at the administrative office located at Fifteen-Month-Numberry Street between hours of eight and four. Proceeds will be donated to Adopt a Family. For further information, again, you could contact Deb Zeeman at seven-three-two-six-one-three-four-thousand, extension six. And that's all I have.
Anyone else want to take that? Mrs. Cruz, please, onto the council?
Yes, we had a meeting this evening with Councilwoman Mira, and we talked about the shared service agreement, which Julie was able to express to us that it needs to be separated out from our usual shared service agreement into a contract form with just that piece. So it was said that maybe Mr. Nolan and Mr. Parton can work together on taking that piece out of our shared service and putting it into a separate contract. And Julie felt that that would be fine to do, and we would be able to move forward with that. Also discussed was having the high school art classes help with local murals. The Council Green Committee is looking to do murals around town, maybe three or four, and they would like to see if our high school students could help them with that project. So we shared, Mrs. Zercher shared the high school art teachers' information, contact information, so they'll be reaching out to discuss how they can do that. And that concludes my...
Reporting.
Oh, and the recycling. They had asked if, they're looking to do a study on recycling to help them with a grant that they're looking into. So we also shared Steve, Mr. Elijah's, information as well. So we've, most likely, he has those numbers already on hand, and he can just share that information over. And that's it.
Okay. The PTA, Mrs. Bush?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, we can share, go ahead. You actually attended the meeting, yes.
They actually met October twenty-fourth, when everyone was away. So I went to those meetings, there was three that evening, primary school, middle school, and high school, so they tested my ability to run. But primary school, they are actually organizing events, fundraising events, but centered around parent-student fundraisers, a winter wonderland dance. They're looking into doing a zumba dance in January. It sounded very interesting, I wish I was back down in the primary school so I could participate. Middle school, they had commented on, they have a large staff participation this year with the PTA that they were very happy with. They also were talking, looking to speak with the librarian because they had some points that they needed to use up before they expire, so they're looking into donating bucks. And then the high school had asked if there was a PTA roundtable on the horizon, because there were some things that they wanted to talk, not necessarily with us, but a chance to come together and talk amongst themselves as well about different activities that they're doing. So they thought that would be a good opportunity to not only meet with you, but also meet with each other. And then the next meetings are November twenty-eighth, this primary school is six-thirty, December sixth, at six o'clock is elementary, and at six-thirty is the middle school.
Yes. And then we have a lot of upcoming events for December that I just would like to make note of because they're going to take place before our next board meeting, so if I don't announce them now, we're going to miss them all. So it's winter concert season, so Grade Three Concert is Monday, December third. The High School Winter Concert is Wednesday, December fifth. The Middle School Concert is Tuesday, December eleventh. Grade One Concert, Wednesday, December twelve. And the band concert at the middle school is the thirteenth of December. So that's all taking place before our next board meeting, if anybody wanted to attend, but I did want to put that out there.
And all listed on our calendar?
On your website, yes.
Anything else? Not the lighter, Mr. Bazak?
I have nothing to do with this time.
Um, Education Foundation?
Right, so Ray had mentioned two things already. So he already did the thank you for the Harlem Wizards event that he read earlier. He did mention as well, the annual dinner dance is Friday, February first. Sixty dollars if you purchase tickets in advance, seventy dollars at the door. But I will let you know that tomorrow evening is our next meeting. We're meeting here, back at the high school, rather than in the public library, seven o'clock. There will not be a December meeting, so the next meeting after tomorrow evening is January fifteenth, also scheduled for here at seven.
Okay. Um, Mr. Nielsen, next one?
We'll have a brief executive session in a little while, but other than that, just the negotiations obtained already, again.
And our student representative, Scaziana?
I would like to add something tonight. I would just like to touch upon what Ms. Zercher said earlier and how you shared my experience with the with the focus group meeting that we had about charter schools last week. So overall, yeah, it's kind of like, oh. So overall, I found it to be very enlightening, and the Department of Education representative that was sitting at our table, she listened a lot to my opinions and to the other, my other two fellow students that were sitting there with us. And overall, I just thought it was a really great experience where the, where the Department of Education was really listening to the teachers and to the other representatives there, as well as the students. So overall, I did think that it was a very good way for the state and for other people to kind of listen and know what's going on here in South River, so, yeah, that's all I would like to add for tonight.
Okay. Um, Mr. Yoldar Newp, just come before the board.
Mr. Wild, I attended two meetings last week. Oh, excuse me, last Wednesday night, I attended the Union County Education Association, no, I'm sorry, wrong hat. The Union County Board of Education, School Boards Association. And I was invited there, that's why I went. And they had a woman from the state of New Jersey, who's retired now, but has her own business, talking about increasing student achievement. Her name was Barry Anholt Erickson, Ph.D. And I'll just touch on a few things as she said. She pointed out that the biggest, well, she talks about a lot of things that we already do, differentiated instruction and so on. But the biggest items that have effect on student achievement are quality teachers and quantity of high-quality instructional materials. Now, how do we make sure that our materials are high-quality instructional materials? Well, she put out a, there was a PowerPoint, took about a half hour. And I just got that in my email today, so if it's okay with Mrs. Zercher, I'll send that to you, and then you could decide where should go from there, okay? But it was very interesting, so that's why I bring it to you. Another big thing is social and emotional learning. That's going to be a big focus this year from School Boards Association, not just Union County, but School Boards Association. And we, let's see, oh, here it is. The NJSBA is requesting that, well, they have a task force on mental health which deals with social and emotional learning. And that is a big part of what we need to address, not we in South River, but we as boards of education around the state, what we need to address. They will be reporting on that task force to us in May, that's our next meeting. And I'll keep you informed on that. Also, this was Saturday at the delegate assembly. Dan Sinclair, who is our NJSBA president, told us, well, this is my editorial comment. Somebody finally figured out at NJSBA that there's such a thing as the non-college-bound learner. And I'm over there like, oh, duh, yeah. And they figured out that the state of New Jersey, overall, because of the emphasis put on college-bound learners, has neglected to a large degree the non-college-bound learner. And that's why we don't have, you know, shop anymore to what we once had it, we don't have home ec, we don't have, well, there's vocational schools for that. Well, yes, there are, however, they are much more selective in the students that they take than they were years ago. So if a kid wants to be a plumber, it's got to be academically successful too, okay? Now, I don't have a problem with that, but let's suppose a kid wants to be a plumber who's making like seeds, he might not get in. So it's up to us to educate this kid, not to be a plumber, but in the general education of the trades. That is NJSBA's focus right now, one of their focuses. So keep that in mind, because there's more coming down the pike. Again, mental health services, oh, college, non-college-bound learners, what they call CTE is the course they'd like to follow, it's Career Technical Education, okay? And they are looking for, NJSBA is looking for faith and/or stable funding to go to the schools to not necessarily bring back those courses, but if that's what it takes to bring them back, to find out what we need to do for these CTE students, okay? Because a lot of them are out there floundering because there's no place for them to go. They also recognize that not every kid has to go to college. And I'm sitting there going, oh, duh, we knew that, what are you going to do with that? Yeah? So they're focusing on that to see what to do with the non-college-bound students. That's a big thing with them right now.
Tony, can I ask a question? Are they looking to provide the school districts with additional funding, or we have to know their programs first?
No, with additional, to implement the programs.
So they're, they are looking for funding to provide other districts?
All districts.
With, okay.
With funding. Now, it's a pie in the sky to think it's going to be all districts, but that's what they're looking for.
Okay.
And they want us to implement these types of programs. What these programs are, they don't know yet, okay? But the focus is leaning towards social, emotional learning and the CTE right now, and mental health issues. So those three are the big things that NJSBA is looking at. Now, remember, if we pass a resolution down there, that does not have the force of law. That tells NJSBA lobbies to go out and push these things with the legislators, okay? But that, that's all that is, but it is effective frequently. Let's see, student, student climate. What they're looking for to find out about student safety is the student survey on climate, on school climate, to find out what the students feel is the biggest safety issue, okay? So they're looking for that, we'll get more instruction on that later on. And they want early outreach, they want us to provide early outreach to troubled and, to troubled students, okay? They have a task force on mental health, which I mentioned before, and, goes more, sorry to take so much time, but I've done this on Thursday. They have a plan that they're recommending to the legislature to have judges who only hear special ed cases, that's all they do, okay? Because there's a backlog from what I understand, and this is what they're telling us, that they want, they're pushing for that. And if a parent is challenging placement, what they're doing is the burden on, is the burden is on the district to defend their decisions, except for placement, which the burden is on the parent, you know?
Only in cases of unilateral placements. When a parent goes outside the IEP process. In every other case, the burden's on the board regardless of whether the board brought the claim or not.
Okay.
Never did.
Good to know, thank you.
Bad, bad to deal, it's good to know.
Yeah, I agree. And again, they're looking for full funding for special ed. And both State Senate Leader Sweeney and Governor Murphy are on board with that. We had a guest speaker down there, Lucille Davy, who was a previous, or a former, I should say, Commissioner, thank you, Lucille. Former Commissioner. And they talked about, one of the big things they're looking at is consolidation. Translate? Regionalization, not just high schools, whole thing. So there's a task force on that, but former Commissioner Davy said that if she were the Commissioner right now, she would be pushing for that because that's the best solution to the financial problems. I don't know that I agree with that, I haven't read enough about it, but that is her position. But she's not the Commissioner anymore, so she reported that to us, and she does have influence in Trenton, even though she's no longer the Commissioner. Let's see. Oh, one of the things about consolidation is there's another aspect of that, is a county board of education, okay? So in other words, instead of a South River Board, an East Brunswick Board, and so on, there would be a Middlesex County Board of Education, and all municipalities would be under that umbrella. We would not have our own superintendents. There would be, it wouldn't be the county superintendent as it is now, but there would be a superintendent for all of the county schools. Not for each of the county schools, for all of the county schools, okay? And then I'm sure they would have to have other administrators to help, but that's what they're looking at. NJSBA has a task force on that too, but they are seriously considering recommending that. One of our colleagues from Highland Park, Darcy, remember Darcy from a few years ago? She stood up and she asked them, she said, "Well, will the charter schools be part of that consolidation?" They didn't have an answer. They sort of looked at each other and said, "Oh, no, we have to look at that." So just wanted to point that out, that Darcy's still on the ball. They also were talking about recommending to the legislature the elimination of non-operating districts. In other words, if there's a district that doesn't operate a school, it's a non-operating district. Chris, anything on that?
Yeah, they eliminated them all in 2009, but it didn't quite take.
Oh, okay.
When Lucille Davy was the Commissioner, the consolidation thing became a major initiative. There's state statute on it, and somehow there are still non-operating districts, and there are even new, new non-operating districts being created. Block Harbor just created its own non-operating district in 2017, with the blessing of former Commissioner Harrington.
Of course.
So it's a work in progress, apparently.
So, well, anyway, that's what they're looking at to, I guess, fix that or whatever, because it was brought up that they need to address that, okay? That doesn't really affect us, non-operating district that, like, it's not like when Spotswood sent the South River or Miltown sent the Spotswood, no, that's sending, receiving relationship. A non-operating district has no schools within the district, but they have a board of education. Now, what some schools do is, if it's a non-operating district, the receiving district will allow, I don't know how many members, maybe one member or two members of the sending district's board to sit on their board. I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know how much that would affect us, I don't think it would, but it's just an FYI to see what's coming down the road and what they're going to do, I don't know. And I don't think there's anything else. Sweeney's looking for a way to fully fund pensions. Oh, there is a county, oh, I told you, the countywide school district, there's a pilot program up in Sussex County. They're doing that now. Now, it was voluntary, they didn't have to do it, okay? But they're doing it right now, they're going to see how it goes, and will probably have a choice down the road a few years, so. a choice down the road a few years, so. And that's all I have, so thank you for your indulgence.
Very much appreciated.
I just have one other thing, in relation to what you were saying about technical schools. I actually attended NJ Biz Panel, NJ Biz is a local newspaper, they hosted an education panel, and they discussed a lot about students within New Jersey and trying to get them to attend colleges within New Jersey, and showing them the benefits of being in-state, and how that helps New Jersey when kids are staying in-state, they're then finding jobs here, and, and they're building our economy here. So it was quite interesting. One thing I did get a takeaway from that I need to drop off to your office tomorrow is, there was a gentleman who had a flyer, he actually works with underprivileged children to help them find the funding for college. And he comes in, he can come into a school district and do a seminar and, and help with that. So I want to give you his information.
Oh, one more thing, if I may, I'm sorry. This coming Saturday is Legislative Committee meeting for NJ SBA down in Trenton, and I am your representative on that. If there's anything you want me to bring up or ask about, please give me a call or an email or whatever, anytime before Saturday.
Okay.
Mrs. Cruz, any motions to pay attention?
The Finance Committee recommends that all bills presented, having been certified by the School Business Administrator Board Secretary Pete Haid as listed in, are so moved.
Mrs. Cruz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All in favor?
Aye.
Out, so carried. This time we'll leave the meeting to the public. Or any comments or questions covering any items, anyone coming to the podium, state your name in the press, and comments and questions are, I'm going to turn them. Anyone from New York? Anyone? Ms. Hall.
No, I mean, I-
Anything you want to talk about.
Okay. My name is Pauline Barlow. My son is in first grade, and I apologize in advance if I'm wasting anybody's time tonight by bringing this up at such a formalized meeting. But my concerns date back to the beginning of the school year, before the school year started. I had sent a letter of request for a change of teacher assignment in August, and with disregard, I got no responses from the principal of the primary school, numerous phone calls, and so I took it to the superintendent's office and kindly met with Mrs. Archer. And we had a good conversation, we discussed last year's school year and my concerns about the current school year. And I agreed with her that the teacher that my son was assigned should be given an opportunity, and we agreed that I would follow up, you know, and let her know how things were going. And I did say that I would follow up in a timely manner, because I didn't want to let the school year get away from us, I didn't want to waste time in a situation that I was predicting was not going to be the best situation for him. So I started reaching out, I reached out to her on November first, we followed up, and after several exchanges, I was told that his teacher, who is Mrs. Aquavella, was retiring, and I was aware of that, but I didn't want to waste another two months, since her retirement date is January second. And she said that a new teacher would be assigned, and, you know, kind of dismissed it and said that there would be nothing that could be done, or just kind of left it at that. So now it's November nineteenth, nine days, school days, working school days have been wasted, there's twenty-one and a half left till the winter, you know, winter break. And to be quite honest, I'm disappointed in the school, the principal, the superintendent. I've done my due diligence, and I've followed your process, but the class, the classwork assignments that were given are questionable, the homework's been inconsistent, the parent-teacher conference was so difficult to follow that I can't imagine how first graders are able to follow someone who has no organizational skills or ability to lead the children that have a clear path. And your conversation, your points that you just brought up from the meeting that you observed about successful students is, you know, how successful or how, how, what kind of teachers they have. And this is a clear example of a teacher that's eligible for retirement, and I could see it coming from the beginning, that it wasn't a good choice, and I didn't want him in this classroom. And here I am, I don't know what our other, I don't know how else to go about it, so that's why I'm here, to bring it forth to you. You know, what are your thoughts? Is this where I'm supposed to be, bringing it up to you at this point, even though, you know, I brought it up in August, and here we are, going through a third of the school year?
There is. We have no problem with you bringing it up here at any time this actually board had listened to any comments or complaints. And saying that, the board would have to know a lot more information. And with that, you want to, Mrs. Archer?
Yeah, sure. I mean, a lot of, a lot of elements go into making decisions about moving students from one classroom to another, and all of those, all of those elements were explored in this scenario. So the decision not to move that, that student was made for specific reasons that we would never discuss in public, and that honestly, I would not be in a position to be able to share with the board, as we don't share confidential information about students with board members.
I don't understand why you didn't share those with me, I'm his mother. You didn't share those with me when we met, as to why he couldn't be moved, other than to give her the opportunity, which I did. So now I've given her the opportunity, observed firsthand how she teaches, I've observed his lack of progress, as I had stated my concerns when we met, and I, I don't understand-
Yeah. Unfortunately, my recollection is a little bit different, and I do believe we had some of that conversation, but we can certainly meet again, I'm willing to give whatever time is necessary for us to sit down and discuss those factors again.
I'm not looking for more time to discuss, I'm looking to have removed our classroom, the classroom, as I've asked twice. Now, what I don't understand is that there's one particular student that was in this classroom who wouldn't return to the classroom, and so he was moved. He wouldn't come back to the classroom because of the way the teacher was teaching, and so because he refused to go back in, he got what he wanted and he was moved. So I went through the process, and everything's been unresolved. Is that fair?
Again, what I can offer you is a time for us to sit down and talk about the situation once again.
Mr. Park, do you have any of that?
Yeah, this, understandably, you're not satisfied with the responses you're getting tonight, but this, moving a child, an individual child from one classroom to another is not a Board of Education decision, that is a right that goes to the administration. So your best avenue is to meet with Mrs. Archer and talk about it, and clarify if there are things that you believe were talked about, or that should have been, that weren't, or that, or if it shouldn't have been, you need to have that discussion further. That is the top of the chain of command as far as these issues go. As far as the other student that you talk about, we cannot answer those questions, because that's not something that we can share. We cannot talk to any parent about somebody else's student. So I know that's frustrating, and I know you want answers, but there are confidentiality rules that we really can't get around. So again, schedule with Mrs. Archer another meeting, and as quickly as possible, obviously, you believe that time is of the essence, and we understand that, but that's really all we can operate against.
I have one other question. I also have placed several phone calls to the primary school principal, and they've gone disregarded, understanding that he is not in the school anywhere, has he been for several weeks? Can you divulge where the principal of the school is?
The principal is out for a personal matter, but there is an administrator at that school, Mr. Paul Coleman has been the administrator at that school. You said you made several attempts to speak to an administrator, and they've gone unanswered? That I can address right away, to make sure that you get a response.
And my other question is, if our conversation goes with no satisfaction, and it doesn't go anywhere, so I just have to sit back and let him?
No, you can reach out to the county superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah, you can reach out to the county superintendent.
Is that the way you want this to go?
No, certainly not. I'm just giving you all the information.
I mean, because I didn't want it to go this far. I don't understand why I'm here.
I, I understand, I just want to give you all the accurate information.
So coming back here in any future capacity does me no good, was what you're saying?
The board will not be able to make the decision or the change that you're asking for directly now.
Okay. Thank you.
We will ask from the audience. Andrew, you'll close the public portion of the meeting. The board, we don't need to close session. Resigned opportunities such as seven, we have the open for a meeting now. The following subject to be discussed at a closed session, the Board of Education will be-
Personnel and attorney-client privilege.
Client.
Personnel and attorney-client privilege.
It is presently anticipated that the product to be discussed in a closed session will be disclosed when it's been resolved. Do I hear a motion?
Nielsen.
Bush.
Motion by Nielsen, one second.
Renée, Bush.
Mr. Bush, welcome.
Mr. Rodrick.
Yes.
Mr. Beza.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen.